We will call our meeting to order tonight. Renata, do the roll call please, if you would.
Gookin?
Yes, I'm here.
Miller?
Here.
English?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Eddinger?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
If we would rise for the invocation, we have Pastor Pat Lessard with the Real Life Ministries. Welcome, Pat.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for days like today where the sun shines in Coeur d'Alene. We are blessed. It's such a beautiful city and we are privileged and honored to be here. We thank you for these great men and women that lead our city. They carry a special weight and responsibility being the leaders of our community. And they do that with love and care and concern and vision. And we thank you for them. We pray that you would give them wisdom and guidance as they shoulder the load for us in leading and guiding our community. And for us as people and following them, may we do that well, Lord. We pray for unity for this community. We pray for unity for these leaders as many people have many opinions, but they carry those. And we pray that you would lead them and guide them in the decisions that are needing to be made, as well as they seek to hear and to understand the many facets and complexities of the decisions that are needing to be made. And so, we lift this meeting up to you and pray that you would lead and guide, in Jesus' name. Amen.
What do you think of this in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the tree that stands one nation under our God in the business of the Constitution.
I don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda tonight, so we will move on to the public comment portion. If there's anyone that wishes to address the council, should have three minutes to do so. Doesn't look like we have much of a crowd here. Do we have someone? It's always good to have at least one. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Small from Lake City Center. And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Mayor Widmire and all the members of the Coeur d'Alene Council. Because I understand that, well, our grant, it looks like it's been accepted. And we are elated, our community block grant. And I wanted you to know, it's not just you I wish to thank, but everyone with the city of Coeur d'Alene. It's been incredible, I mean, to come down here and attend meetings. And if I couldn't find the right room, somebody would say, hey, rather than tell you which way to go, I'm going to take you personally there. And it was just incredible. Everybody I've met, and there were several people I want to name in particular. And right off the bat, Troy Timison. And when Woody suggested that, you know, I have an opportunity to meet with Troy and show him the center, I honestly expected maybe five or 10 minutes of your time. He was there three and a half hours and looked over every inch of our building, interior or exterior, and was genuinely concerned about the services that we provide, not only to seniors, but everybody in this community. So Troy, I thank you for that. And with Michelle Cushing through this whole process was just fantastic. And I also want to thank Bill Greenwood and Tim Martin. Both the Parks and Rec and Streets Departments have been just fantastic. But thank you all for the way that you've treated Lake City Center and the many people we serve. And just to give you a quick idea of what's going on there, for those of you that haven't heard this before, right now, 10,000 Americans turn 65 years of age every day, seven days a week. And a lot of them are moving here to North Idaho. We're seeing more people come into the center every day.
Well, not 10,000 a day, right?
That's 10,000 a day, yeah. But not 10,000 a day coming here, but there are a lot of them coming here. But, and we're seeing right now, over 300 people are coming through our center every day. And in the last 12 months, we've served over 6,000 congregate meals. And those are meals that they come in, we have, if you're 60 or older, it's a suggested $5 donation. And in addition to that, if you're under 60, you can come and eat a gourmet lunch for $7. And I would encourage all of you to come and try that. And that includes your dessert, that includes your beverage, the whole works. And they really are gourmet meals. In addition, more than 30,000 Meals on Wheels were distributed to those that are homebound and disabled in Coeur d'Alene. And that is remarkable. I mean, over 30,000 meals. And these are the people that need it most. And most of them low-income individuals. So anyway, on behalf of Lake City Center, again, thank you all for what you do. And please thank your staffs, those, you know, throughout the city, Troy especially, I know that you deal with them all, the department heads. But please, thank everybody, because it's been a genuine pleasure working with you. Thank you.
We're well-represented on council by seniors.
Yeah, it was passed from...
I'm thinking next year.
And they show some of the problems that will be alleviated with our drainage problems thanks to this grant.
Oh, great, thank you.
I'm thinking next year, it's $5 for me.
Dan, I think you're next in line for being the old guy, right? It's been passed from Ron to me.
I didn't say that.
Well, I'll be 68 in July, so I don't know where you are. Man, I can't remember 68. Okay. Get ready.
Okay, we will move on to, we have some presentations. The first is a proclamation. And if, Mindy, if you want to come up, and I will read the proclamation, and maybe you can talk a little bit about what you do. So come on up to the podium and I'll read this. Troy, unless you wanted to read this, you're so good at reading. But you want me to take this? All right, I'll take this. So this is a proclamation in regards to the census. And it says, "Whereas more than $675 billion per year in federal funding is allocated to states and communities based upon census data, whereas an up-to-date and accurate census count is vital in ensuring our state and cities receive annual funds that help improve transportation, schools, hospitals, public works, and other vital programs. Whereas census data helps shape where to locate schools, offices, and stores. Whereas census data helps local government provide greater public safety and emergency preparedness. And whereas census data ensures fair congressional representation in the U.S. House of Representatives and in redistricting state legislators, county and city councils, and school and voting districts. Whereas the 2020 census will create jobs in communities, and whereas the census is meant to represent everyone. Now therefore, I, Steve Widmire, Mayor of the City of Coeur d'Alene, do hereby proclaim April 1st, 2019, as Census 2020 Awareness Day." And so, Mindy, maybe if you would just tell us a little bit about the census and what you're doing and what would be going on in Coeur d'Alene in regards to this.
Sure. Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor and council members, for the support, acknowledging the 2020 census is just about a year away. April 1st, as the mayor just announced, is our one-year-out mark. We have a lot of work to do in the next year. The census, decennial census, happens every 10 years. It's our one time every 10 years to be counted, and everyone counts. We want to make sure we have a complete count within our, you know, county, Cootney County, and then the rest of Idaho for that matter, because it's really important that we don't have an undercount. The $675 billion annually gets redistricted and moved around depending on what the population is. So we want to make sure that our state and our county is represented. And we just have a lot of work to do, so we appreciate the outreach and awareness, and that's what we'll be working on for the next year.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Woody has a question.
Just a couple, because I'm an ancestry guy. We live in census. We learn so much about census. So the process nowadays, do you guys still knock on doors?
Potentially, yes. So this decennial census will be the first time ever that we can respond by Internet, the first time. So we are hoping that a lot of the residents will take that into consideration. But the three ways to respond would be Internet, phone, and the paper form, which I think the majority of the people do, respond by the paper form. The answers that you, on the questionnaire, the answers to the questions, they are all protected for 72 years. And then they go, they're released to the National Archives after 72 years. They are protected by Title 13 and Title 26 of the U.S. Code. So it's quite confidential and safe. And we're hoping that the Internet's a big success this decennial.
I have to ask the question, is citizenship still a question?
As of this minute, it is. But I believe that that is tied up in a court right now, so...
That's been a question in the past.
It has, actually.
20s and 30s?
The citizenship question, I believe, came onto the questionnaire in the 50s originally. And so, right now, it is tied up in a court. And I believe we should have a decision in the next month or so. I believe by the end of May.
And the questions, where do they come from? They seem to change, they seem to simplify from back in the old days, the 20s, 30s, you learned a lot about people.
Well, the decennial census is not only a population count, but it's also a housing count. So many people do ask, well, why do we want to know if you own or rent the home that you live in? Well, that is one of the reasons right there. But currently, I believe, there are 11 questions on there. And so, it's not digging in too deep, just some basic questions.
All right, thank you.
I had a question. Does the state of Idaho then recognize your counts for populations for cities? Because I know there's some benchmarks as far as the populations of cities on whether they can, Dan, you may correct me on this, but a resort city has to be less than...
10,000.
10,000 to be able to run a local option tax?
Yes. Well, actually, we can do a local option tax, but they automatically get it.
Right, they automatically get it. So does the state recognize your numbers, then? Do they take those as the populations of the cities, then?
Yes. It's a population of every city, county, I mean, we even go down to the census tract in the block. And there are different census tracts within Cootney County that have high non-response rates. So, you know, we want to make sure we're getting out to those hard-to-count populations, and we can change, we would like to change those non-response rates from 2010 to 2020.
And that affects block grant funding, too? Populations, how much you qualify for block grant funding depends on your population as well as your income. But those numbers, I would imagine, go forward when they're awarding block grant funding to make that decision.
Well, currently, for the last 10 years, the state of Idaho has been receiving over $2.4 billion annually of the $675 billion that's distributed throughout the states. These are the core programs that, federal funding programs, so transportation, EMS, Title I, you know, the National Free and Reduced Lunch Programs, you know, medical programs, senior programs, community programs, all those core programs, that is what is reflected. But that doesn't go into account of all the different federal grants that we can all apply for. So, but the population changes everything. Our population will determine so many things looking forward in our future of, you know, what our resources will be and what our infrastructure will look like. And, you know, we are, again, the fastest-growing state in the nation. Well, Nevada tied with us this year. But, so we need to make sure that we're prepared and ready when, you know, the people are moving up here.
Great, thank you. I'll bring this information to you.
Thank you again for your support.
All right, and then we have another proclamation. This one would be declaring the week of April 22nd to 27th, 2019, as a celebration of Arbor Day Week. And come on up, Nick, and I'll read this, and you can tell us a little bit about Arbor Day and what we're doing there. But I'll go ahead and read this. "Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. Whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provides habitat for wildlife. Whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. Whereas Coeur d'Alene has been recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree-planting ways. Now therefore, I, Steve Widmire, Mayor of the City of Coeur d'Alene, do hereby proclaim the week of April 22nd to April 27th, 2019, as celebration of Arbor Day Week." Nick, this is your first Arbor Day as our urban forestry coordinator, so tell us what's going on in Arbor Day this year.
So I want to start by thanking the council for their continued support. And being a Tree City USA, this is our 35th year being a Tree City USA in the city of Coeur d'Alene. This year for Arbor Day, preparations have already started, even though it's early. And I thank the council and Mr. Mayor for giving this proclamation a little earlier this year. I'm using this proclamation to apply for a grant to help fund Arbor Day, which I'm sure most of you will appreciate. But this year, we have already started preparations, they started in about December. It starts off, we partnered with a group called the Arbor Day Organization of North Idaho. I'm going to refer to that group as Adonis, I don't have to say that over and over again. But we do a sticker art contest with Adonis. It goes out to high school students and junior high students. They send art in, we pick winners, and they are awarded prizes. And that art is displayed with Arbor Day. Along with that, we also do a poster contest internally at the city of Coeur d'Alene, which that has started, the art has been out, and it will be judged later on this month. Along with that, we are handing out with Adonis, over 3,000 seedlings this year. At Arbor Day, we will be handing out about 150. The rest of those will go out to schools, 4th grade students in the North Idaho area will receive those saplings, seedlings, along with teachers and some other groups that help fund us. Over the last 35 years, we have handed out 77,000 trees to be planted in our area through this program. This year for Arbor Day, we are going to be hosting our event at the new skate park at Memorial Park. We are going to have a lunch, free lunch for attendees. And we are, before that, going to be planting seven trees at the new workers memorial being constructed at City Park. We have partnered with the Idaho Labor Council and are helping them to get their trees planted at their new memorial. We will have, like, the event is April 27th, Saturday, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And we will plant trees, have lunch, hand out seedlings, recognize the students who've won the art contest, and hopefully, it's a nice sunny day so we can enjoy it. Along with that, we are doing, once again, the library Arbor Day program on April 25th, where we will have a day for kids to come and hear a story about trees, read by, in conjunction with the children's library here at Coeur d'Alene. And we will also have a demonstration to teach them the importance of trees, and they're going to get some hands-on experience with tree identification. And that will be a great program as well. They will also receive seedlings. And with that, I once again thank you, and we are looking forward to Arbor Day. It's the biggest day of the year for people in arboriculture.
So Arbor Day at the memorial skate park, right?
Yes.
That's what you're saying? So do you think there's a chance that there could be a council person that breaks out his old skateboard and may at least give us one or two runs? You think that may happen?
If the sun's out, maybe.
Okay, we heard it, maybe.
I sure hope it happens.
I think we can sell tickets to that.
The pressure, the pressure.
Just want to drop into the bowl.
One bowl.
Thank you, Nick. I know last year, it was a great success. You had it down at the college last year.
Yes.
And that was very well-attended, and we're looking forward to it this year. And everyone in Coeur d'Alene loves trees.
Great, thank you very much.
I'll give you this here. Any member of the council have anything to announce tonight? Quiet group tonight, no announcements? I have no announcements either.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move for approval consent calendar as presented, including Resolution 19009, which includes the Lake City Center that Bob was so excited about. Thank you, everyone, for that.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yep.
English?
Yes.
Eddinger?
Yep.
Motion carried. We will move on to other business. This is in regards to our self-funded medical insurance presentation. And Troy is going to lead us off and then hand it off to a couple of other folks.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Yes, we come before you tonight to bring up the topic again of the self-funded health insurance program we're proposing to step into at the city of Coeur d'Alene. We are seeking your approval for funding of the actuarial study, which is part of the process. In your packet, I'm very pleased to announce that all three bargaining groups, the fire union, the Lake City Employees Association, and the Police Association have shown their support for moving forward to do this actuarial study. The Idaho Department of Insurance requires that public entities submit an application for approval, as well as the self-funded program, which would include the actuarial study. That study will take six to eight weeks, and we would like to get going with it now. You are not saying yes to the full plan at this point is just a next step. It's a critical step if we are to pull together an October 1 transition, which is where our current plan would renew. The actuarial study will look at the development of the required contribution rates. In a fully insured plan, that would be what our premiums would equate to. They will look at projecting our future claims based on our past. They will factor in the stop-loss premiums, administrative expenses, reserve contributions, and any other expenses related to providing this benefit. They will develop the financial statements, which will be reviewed by the Department of Insurance, and we will do a three-year look at what we foresee with this plan. So it will look at both the employer and the employee portion of those contributions. It will look at claims, reserves, and what we have been doing in the past. It will also look at what we need to have in reserve for the years going forward, again, a three-year look forward. And we will do a number of adverse looks at what could happen in a worst-case scenario. So it's really looking at best and worst-case scenarios. So they will also work on the minimum surplus requirements. That will be a significant dollar amount, and we understand that. They will do all of those calculations. They will comply with the Idaho Code, Section 41, 401O, Section 3. And they will look at solvency testing so that we can be comfortable with the forecasts. These will meet the requirements for the state of Idaho, and we are looking for your approval. We've gone out to a total of three different firms, one which chose not to put in a bid, and the minimum cost is $15,000 to $17,000. Staff would be seeking your approval for a not-to-exceed of $27,000. The additional $10,000 only would occur if we can't hit our timelines, and the actuarial has to go back in and update any forecasts. They charge almost $5,000 to do looks. We are patterning this after our city sister down in Moscow, which has done an actuarial update. So we would like to keep on the timeline. Where we would find the money to pay for this is we have savings in the administration department because of a position that's not been filled. This particular actuary is very good at this type of work, and we believe that we can hit all these timelines. So the overall financing would include the pre-funding and ongoing reserve requirements. Thanks to our consultants with the Murray Group, we are approximating $1,500,000 would need to be set up as a reserve sometime into the future. And by that, I mean that as we look to transition to this particular new plan, we won't have any claims the first few months of the plan, because the claims that have been submitted would be paid by Regents as it pays out. So we would have capital coming in greatly in excess of what any claims would be. So that will be a part to the financial model that means we don't have to take $1,500,000 initially and set up the reserve. We will probably get a break on what has to go in immediately with other reserves coming in that will be used for the what-if scenario. So our proposal, if you were asking today, would be fund balance would be the source of the initial pot of money, combined with contributions that would come in. So Department of Insurance requires this actuarial study. It has to be done. It goes with the self-funded application. It will advance the steps that your insurance committee has been working on. The medical review group has been fantastic. They've asked lots of questions. They are representing the bargaining groups here at the city of Coeur d'Alene, and again, supporting this. The city spends about $5 million a year on Regents Blue Shield for a fully insured medical benefit. These are the required costs. However, as we look at self-funded plan, we see immediate savings based on the self-funded plan that we would never get with Regents. Regents also is for profit. There's profit that is in the program over years, and our consultant tonight will address that. So we're looking and hoping for at least a 4% to 8% decrease in our costs by moving to self-funding. It gives us more flexibility in what it is we provide our folks at the city of Coeur d'Alene. And there are some efficiencies that we believe we can do as we have 1,000 members on the plan. So we have with us tonight Greg Helbling, Senior Benefits Consultant with the Murray Group. And they have done a great amount of work, and he's got a PowerPoint presentation. Any questions I could answer, or we could have Greg come up and then?
Woody?
Just a couple. So, thinking back here over the years, I remember you've been happy and you've been sad. Guess what? We're taking a big hit on insurance, up 8%, and how are we going to pay for it? I seem to remember that. Every once in a while, a good year would come and go, guess what, they're not bumping us. So we have always spent this $5 million bucks, one way or the other, kind of. Is that what our cost of being insured through Regents?
Fully insured, correct.
Fully insured.
Yep.
So you're looking at 4% savings, which is about 200, but we have to have 1.5 parked somewhere. So do you look at that 1.5 and how many 200, how many years we have to save it to cover it? Or do you look at it a little, is the cash flow different? Or is it the same amount of money going? I'm sorry, I asked all these questions at once, it's very confusing.
So the reserve is totally tied to this trust. We are proposing five trustees that would oversee the inner workings of the trust. They've actually stepped up, and they're going to be doing some training, assuming that you approve moving forward with the actuarial study. My observation on the medical insurance is that in the program we're currently in, we do not have any control, and all we see are rates going up, or a zero has been our best. You have been a party to a program called VIBA, Variable Employee Benefit, and it is putting money into our staff members' accounts to help pay for the small things and/or to be used for retirement. It's been a number of years, like 13 years, we've been doing that. That's a great way to offset some of the lower-cost items. In so doing, with a self-funded trust, we can start to work the right way in sustaining our medical costs and continuing to keep our folks healthy, which is a gigantic plus. And we are taking the formula for profit out of Regents, because we will probably use them. At the end of this, if it all works perfectly, you'll get new cards and away we go. There won't be any change, significant change, to the benefits. In the future, the flexibility would be, we could come forward and offer a modified pharmaceutical program that gets better benefit for our employees and their family members and lowers our costs. Right now, we don't have that choice with Regents. We can go out and work with a stop-loss insurance provider because we're able to work directly with them and show our great record. And the city has a very good record with its health care costs. Mr. Helbling will show you almost $1 million over three years that went to the insurance company. a million dollars over three years that went to the insurance company. So I look at that two hundred and hope for another three hundred, given good years, which would be five hundred thousand dollars a year.
So the Bennys stay the same?
Bennys stay the same.
The medical, the old guy thing down there for Dan and this other old guy, dentistry, all that kind of stuff, all the things that are included?
Yeah, we'd be medical-only on this particular portion of it, but yes.
Okay.
It would look the same, smell the same, and the card would be different. It's the inner workings on the back end. We would be paying regents for the claims. We would be taking on some of that risk, but we would be reinsuring so that our risk is lowered in event of a gigantic claim.
So when you go to a doctor and you have a regent's, it's a regent's card, they go, you're not in our program, or you're not, you don't belong to our network. That doesn't show?
Wouldn't show, wouldn't change.
And then you said there's our own, what do you call them, a board?
We would have trustees that oversee the trust, five-member board.
Internal, in the city, city folks?
City folks.
Okay. And VIBA hangs in there?
Yes.
Long-term, that still works in your favor?
Yes, it's a very good program. And we're contracted on our benefits. So that's why your associations and your union are quite comfortable with this.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Troy, Woody brought this up, but I want to clarify it. And in years past, you've come to us and you've said, oh, my goodness, we're going to get hit on our insurance. It's going to go up, what, fifteen, twenty? You remember, the numbers were really crazy. Does this fix that?
Does it fix that?
So in other words, can we anticipate kind of a stable amount that we're going to be putting into insurance, and we're not going to be dealing with unpredictable fluctuations?
Great question. The hard part is looking into that crystal ball. This group has performed very well on its claims. We can go back twenty-plus years and look at what it is. To answer your question, it takes the profit out of the underwriter that works for the insurance company, and an underwriter does not want to be wrong in setting the rates. So if we had a bad year, and if we were playing underwriters today, we would probably forecast a large increase for that group, because this last year didn't do very well. So to answer your question, my trust is in the fact that people want to take care of themselves. We want them to be healthy, and in so doing, we should be able to keep our costs what they have been. So we're using the past to predict the future, and our past has been very good at the City of Coeur d'Alene with health insurance.
Anything we can do to motivate employees to go to the doctor, you know, not wait until the last minute?
I would suggest that when we have our own trust, we could put motivators in the program with the consent of the bargaining groups that say, we want you to go see the doctor. We want you to get the wellness check. And in case you forget, there might be a little bit of a penalty for someone that's not going and getting that wellness check so we can find things early rather than later.
Excellent. Okay, so now the trust. You have a council, and as long as I've been on this council, we get tempted by various baubles out there that we want to buy. Would we ever be able to borrow from that trust?
Not legally, so no.
Oh, well, so that we can, is what you're saying.
There would be severe penalties, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good one.
So when we're talking about the reserves, is the formula, it's set by the Department of Insurance, so seventy percent of four months of your expected premium? Is that what sets the reserve balance?
That is what they have been looking at in setting those reserve balances. That's been one of the formulas they've looked at.
Okay. So the million-five, just doing some quick math, that's a little high?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
They've had some fluctuation, and of course, we don't know what they will come back with, with what we would call the contribution rate going forward. We would call it premiums today.
So in theory, if things worked as planned, the savings are somewhere between two and four hundred thousand dollars a year. You could fund your reserves if you have four years of good medical claims. You could fund this reserve internally in about three to four years.
You are correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Troy? All right.
And again, I can't thank Greg and the Murray Group for all. Nancy's done a great job as well. So we'll bring Greg up and ask him lots of questions, please.
All right.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished counsel. My name's Greg Helbling. I've been consultant on your account for a number of years, and with me tonight is Nancy Nelson, the account manager. And I could probably go home right now after listening to Troy do the, he listens so well in all of the presentations that we've done and in our work on the insurance committee, and has done a great job of explaining it, and there's really hardly anything left for me to talk about. In the presentation that we put together, there are some slides that did a little bit of a review from our last meeting, but I don't want to bore you with that. And so we can kind of go through, maybe allow you to ask some questions. And then I do have some experience, like about a sixty-two-month graph that sort of shows how the city has performed and what the savings would be if we were to try to recreate the past under a self-insured plan. And it's a little bit of an estimate, but it kind of gives you a little bit of comfort in seeing how the city would have performed financially in the past. So with that, how would you like me to proceed?
I would say let's go straight to, for me, let's go straight to the graph and the savings. The decision is if the coverage is the same, if the coverage is seamless, we're talking dollars and cents and security here. So I think that's probably what we're interested in.
Okay, great. This graph, and you can probably see it in your packets, this is sixty-two months of the city's experience under a couple of different insurance carriers. We were with Group Health and then made the change to regents. And you can see that on occasion, you know, the unexpected catastrophic claims come along, and that's what that, that's not a mountain peak right there. That's actually your claims after a couple of large claims that came along. So you can see that there are good months and bad months. There are seasons in there. There are some seasons where it would be more expensive for the city than it would be under the fully insured plan. There are seasons where it's a lot less expensive to be on the self-insured than to be under the fully insured plan. And so with that, the next slide kind of gives you an idea of what that sixty-two-month period would net out. So the premiums during that period of time, the fully insured premium was twenty-three million dollars. The cost of your claims, plus your fixed costs, the cost for your administration and your reinsurance, was about twenty-four million dollars. The reinsurance also paid for any claims that exceeded, and it kind of climbed through that period of time, from, you know, somewhere around, they were capped somewhere around a hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so reinsurance took care of all over three million dollars of those catastrophic claims. It's called a pooling point within the fully insured plan. Your self-insured plan, it would be called stop-loss coverage. And so, you know, you remember the spikes that we saw. There was a couple of rough stretches in there. Your reinsurance premiums could have been a little higher then during that period of time, which wouldn't be accounted for in my graph. And then when those large risks go past, then the reinsurance rates would return or become stable. And so as we look at that, you're looking at a savings, you know, pretty close to forty thousand dollars a year, a month, the difference between the fully insured and the self-insured. Now, there's no guarantees going forward that it will be as good as it has been in the past, but this is probably the best recreation that we can make for you to show the difference between the two. The savings, that four to eight percent that we talked about, would be ACA fees that you don't have to pay anymore if you self-fund, and some of the profit contingency in reserve that the insurance companies have to put into their formulas, you would be able to capture those monies for the city, for the trust.
So Greg, in this scenario, then sixty-two months, two and a half million dollars, a little more than that, that scenario was about five hundred thousand dollars approximately a year?
Uh-huh.
That the self-insurance would have been less than the fully insured?
Correct, correct. If you were to take into account the ACA fees, they weren't, the ACA fees weren't there five years ago, but they are there now, and so it works into that comparison.
I think Woody brought up the point earlier about, or maybe Dan, about rates and how you determine rates. Is that through the actuarial study that you have done every year, so that will adjust your rates, and do the rates vary upon than your actual claim experience, and that's what sets your rates for the following year?
Yes, yes. And then that's all governed by the actuarial study and goes to the Department of Insurance, and it gets approved by the Department of Insurance. The actuarial study has to happen every year, as required by Idaho Code.
Does your reserve balance, then, affect rates? So let's say that you've had several good years. Your reserve balance is built up. Under this scenario, it was supposed to be a million and a half. Let's say that that reserve balance had built up to two and a half million dollars. Does that affect your rates? Do you keep that kind of as a cushion against further increases? Do you have a year where you decrease it? How does, in addition to that fund reserve balance up and above the suggested rate, work?
That fund balance would have some impact on future rate increases. So if you had larger surplus than expected, then you would have, you know, a smaller rate increase. So it could buffer that. The actuarial study will make a recommendation, and it would be approved by the Department of Insurance. If the city wanted to fund more than that amount, they could. So the actuarial study is going to show what your minimums are going to be required, and the department is going to second that.
So Troy, I guess I have a question for Troy then. Could council make the decision if the required fund balance was a million and a half dollars, the trust balance was two million, then you could release five hundred thousand dollars back to the general fund balance, or?
Cannot do that.
Okay, so once it's in, once it's in that, once you're building up this trust balance, there's money in this fund?
Uh-huh.
Then the only thing that it could really do is reduce rates, then?
Correct, right, right. So once money is in the trust, it can only come out for, you know, claims and administration. And so then, you know, you may have a lower rate, or you might have, say, a premium holiday, as an example, one month where you didn't have premiums paid into it. So that would be the way to burn off the excess that would be in that, in that fund.
So the only way to provide savings, then, back to the general fund would be through lower rates?
Correct.
Yeah, because that million and a half that you're putting in there is kind of a sunk cost upfront. You're putting a million and a half dollars in there. It's somewhat of an expense, because you don't have access to anymore. It serves a purpose, but it's an expenditure upfront.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, can I follow up on that? And that has to be consistent. Every year we do that funding?
Yeah, every year you have the actuarial study, correct, and then that actuarial study will determine what your rates would be. So they're going to govern the amount, appropriate amount of reserve, and they're going to govern what your rate increases would be.
Is there any kind of a stop in there? So say we have lots of good years, and all of a sudden, the fund balance in our self-insurance fund is really huge.
Uh-huh.
What happens at that point? Our rates go down? Is that the way?
Yeah, so that could be modified by lower rates, or like I said, a premium holiday is something that some employers do.
Cool.
Yeah.
So in essence, that's motivation in itself for employees to keep their rates low, to make sure they get all their checkups, make sure they stay healthy, not have the claims?
I think it changes the paradigm. It makes it more apparent. Right now, you know, the more insurance the employees use, the higher the rates go. And, but when you talk about being self-funded, you know, it isn't like a year later, your rates are going to change. I mean, it is, you know, month by month, the employees will be spending, you know, the trust's money. And so it makes it very visible to them that those are their dollars, and that they want to manage those the best that they can.
And we want to encourage people to go to get checkups and do all of those things. So we want to encourage them to use the account to stay healthy.
Right, correct. Along with that, and I don't know if we need to, but in this approval for the actuarial study, I don't know if you also need to approve the trustees for the trust.
Troy, is that, is that part of the decision tonight, or is the decision tonight just, I guess we don't need trustees unless we approve the plan. So that would probably come at a time where council would approve the plan. Would they approve the trustees at the same time?
Actuarial.
Yeah, that would be great, and funding, because it's not in the budget, and then you've seen the proposed trustees, and all the groups have been comfortable with that as well.
So we do approve the trustees tonight? Is that what your?
That would be great, so that we can continue training, if you're comfortable with that.
Okay, all right. Woody, you had a question?
Okay. So this trust, this one point five starts off, every year that's going to go up, or by your study, it could go up?
Well, the reserve is going to be based on a percentage of claims. So we still are going to have claim inflation, you know. What we're hoping for is, right out of the shoots, to be, to have a lower expense. We will still have, we'll still have some trend increases, some inflation increases. So as claims become more expensive, then that reserve is going to reflect the, a percentage of the monthly claims that come through. So in ten years from now, as an example, if your plan was fifteen percent higher in cost than it is today, then your reserve by formula would be fifteen percent greater than it is today.
So the savings, we were talking about the savings paying for the reserve, not necessarily, or eventually?
Actually, it would. So when they, when they project your premiums, it's designed to pay for your actual expenses and to be able to put money into the reserve so that you can have not just that one point five million, but whatever the reserve requirements are for the future.
Okay. So, so leaving that money side, now, explain to me why regents would handle our stuff, and we don't give them any money, and they don't make any profit. How does that work?
How does that work? Okay, so right now, you know, regents performs all the functions through a fully insured plan. They also have a mechanism to help self-funded accounts, so they can work as the administrator. In that, you know, they'll make some profit on their administration, you know. They will make some profit on their reinsurance. We will probably start out using regents as the administrator and regents as the reinsurer for the first year. We'd like to make this as seamless as possible for the employees. And when Troy mentioned, you know, new ID cards, they'll still be regents' cards, and it'll have the City of Coeur d'Alene's name written on it as well. But, so what we're capturing is, as Troy described so well, is that an underwriter's job is to, a good underwriter, an underwriter that keeps their job for a long time is one that doesn't lose money for the company. So they have to guess in... So they have to guess in the future year what they think the expenses are going to be. And so they're rarely going to guess low. It's not good for their career. So, you know, they're going to, they're going to guess as high as reasonable. Our job is to put it into a competitive position to usually get a reduction, which you see when Troy brings you those rates. And so the risk portion of that, that they want to make sure that they have covered, that's the portion that the city would be capturing then, that kind of contingency and reserve portion. And so that's the main difference.
So this admin and reinsurer is a part of what they do anyway?
Correct, for a certain portion of their book of business.
And so the future, will they always be there doing that? Or do you shop that? Do you do that? Do we do that?
No, well, we do all that for you. So what we would do every year, like even in this year, moving to Regions, we'll get some stop-loss and admin quotes from other carriers just to make sure that Regions is honest in it. And in future years, we'll do the same. That's the best way to know if what they're proposing is fair, is to see what the market is bearing at that point. So we would continue to do that, just as we put out your fully insured account, usually every year, to make sure that you get the best rate possible and put it in a competitive situation.
So it's always going to be out there in the big insurance guys? It's never going to be internal? It's always going to be a Regions, a Blue Shield, or one of those?
Right, right.
We're saving the admin, or we're saving their profit? And, okay, that's the big picture.
Yeah, so claim payers, you know, there's Regions and Blue Cross. You know, they're insurers. There are also third-party administrators in a situation like this. But we could use another third-party administrator who's not a insurance company. We can also have Regions as the administrator and have someone else as the reinsurer. So it gives us more flexibility to kind of pick and choose kind of best-of-class, who's doing the best in pharmacy and reinsurance and administration. So it's still more work on our part, you know, but we, it's sort of what we get excited about. But we'll be able to break those pieces apart and make sure that you're getting the best of each.
But it's still in the same world, still in the insurance world. We're not going out by ourselves somewhere and going to make our own deals.
Correct, yes. So the term is self-funding, it's not self-insuring.
Got it. I guess I misunderstood that. Thank you.
Greg, so in looking at your timeline here, if council chooses to move forward and approve the actuarial study and trustee appointments, when would it come back again? Because what we're looking to do is to, if things go the way that we would like them to go, to have this in place October 1 of 2019. So when would be the point where this would come back before council, to council to give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
So, you know, we put together a pretty aggressive timeline to get this done. And I think that probably in the next, before we pull the trigger on the actuarial study, because we'll say, give us the actuarial study for October 1, or we would say, give us the actuarial study for January 1, as an example. We're going to make a determination of what timeline looks to be the most logical. Because if we go for October, and Regions is slow in getting their pieces together, and the Department of Insurance is slower doing their approvals, then all of a sudden, we aren't going to be done for October, as an example. Then you have to go back, have the actuarial study updated, and that's where the additional costs come from. So we're going to look at that real close in the next week or so before we tell Milliman we want the study for an October date or a January 1 date. So the drop dead would probably be 60 days prior to the renewal date. So 60 days prior to October or 60 days prior to the end of December.
So that the process would be is that once you have the actuarial study, everything is looking good, then we have to take it, we'll take it back to the labor groups. They have to sign off on it, all three labor groups. Then, once you have that in place, then it would come back to this body for council to make the decision. And from the date the council makes the decision, then it's 60 days to implementation?
Yeah, I think, well, I think that, you know, we could back, let's say for some reason you decided that you didn't want to go forward with it. We probably would want to make that determination 60 days before the effective date so that we're out ahead of things a little bit. As opposed to, you know, deciding a couple of weeks before the renewal that we're going to do it, you know, self-funded or fully insured. I would anticipate that when we get the actuarial study back, let's say six to eight weeks from now, that we would come back to council and confirm the dollar amount that they recommend for the reserve, how much you would have to have before the start of the contract, and what the rates are that they're projecting so that council would have an idea of the cost differential before a decision is made.
So more than likely, the second meeting in May then, would the actuarial study, if approved tonight, would come back to the council to make the decision as to move forward or not?
Correct. And the decision to move forward tonight is probably the most, is the greatest hinge point because we have the cost of the actuarial study. There aren't too many other costs that are significant in moving forward. The actuarial study is the largest. So, you know, it's sort of an artificial go-forward tonight, but that's probably the, tonight is the decision where, you know, you're deciding whether or not to pay a certain amount of money to be able to go forward to be able to complete it.
Woody?
So let me understand. So this actuarial study will tell us how much money we need to put in reserve? That's really what it's going to tell us. And then the timeline starts kicking going. And if things get tight and we don't make it on October, then we basically kick it to the next year, but we have to do an actuarial again.
An actuarial update. So that's why we're going to look at the timeline a little closer in the next couple of weeks. We had to kind of get over the hump to get the trustees lined up. You know, we want to have that before this meeting. And so, you know, things often take a little bit longer than you expect. And that's where, you know, I'm a little conservative. I, you know, I would probably have a tendency to say, you know, January 1 as opposed to October 1. But, you know, I think we're going to look at all those pieces and kind of, together with Troy and Melissa and the insurance committee, as to whether or not, you know, it makes sense to, you know, push that out to January or stick with our October 1 date.
January 1 is an option without another actuarial study? Is that right?
Yeah, it would be an option, yes. It's always, yes, if we determine, if we decided right now to have them do the actuarial study for a January 1 effective date. If we say, go with October, and then we have to push it to January, it would cost us more. If we start out and say, January 1 out of the shoots, then it would not cost us more.
So would that, sorry, would that create the January 1 every year from there forward? Because we're talking our budget year.
Correct, and that's what we wanted to be sensitive to because Troy's doing his budget work in August, or July and August. April, May, well, or, but your finals, your finals are kind of July, August.
So I guess on this date, this effective date, when will you be able to come back to council and let them know the date that you're targeting?
So the staff is going to push to make it October 1 with your confirmation. Department of Insurance is the other variable in this and a number of applications that they would be processing. So with your approval tonight, we would look to tighten up the timeframe with the actuarial. And then the Murray Group has an attorney that's drawing up a huge amount of documents that we're not seeing any costs for. And he has a great relationship with the Department of Insurance to see that if we were seven weeks out for an actuarial, we sent an application with the trustees in. Do they think they could process it and get that approved so that we could be effective October 1? Would be a game plan that we would prefer. So it ties into budget. It ties into our typical renewal of the medical plan.
Other questions for Greg or Troy Kiki?
Just this last one. I think I've got this correct, that the initial 1.5 million that comes out of fund balance along with some savings over the next few months is an estimated amount. The actual actuarial report will tell us that exact amount. But that 1.5 million, once it comes out of fund balance into the reserves, it's not, there's no mechanism for it to come back. That is the buy-in to this program.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I would just comment, and I think I mentioned before we went through this years ago when I was at the county. So, you know, this is pretty familiar turf. And, you know, everything I'm hearing is kind of a repeat of that. And this, you know, it worked terrific there. And we did see the cost savings. They had their insurance card that basically looks like, yep, I got real insurance. They go in there, and in terms of the, you know, medical vendor or whatever, they don't care what is going on behind the scenes. Besides the stability for the cost, I think we went through several years where, boy, one year to another, they had to change kind of carriers and different things. And employees don't like that. I mean, they liked to have stability of, okay, this is what gets covered. We can expect that. And if you have to shop other insurance companies, I mean, the coverage can change quite a bit, too. So anyway, I think this makes perfect sense. And the fact that we can't touch it once it's there, that's a bonus.
Any other questions? Woody?
One more. So where is the list of the trustees?
It's on the last page.
It is, okay. Sorry, I never got to the last page.
So the trustees, Randy Adams, Vani Jensen, Melissa Tosi, Bill Todd, Brady Reed are the proposed trustees. All right, any other questions?
Were we approving trustees tonight?
Yes.
And so my question on that is, are those by position? Or are those by, how did those names come about? In other words, did the Department of Insurance say a legal person, a finance person, a resources person? Is that how that was derived?
Department of Insurance does not tell you who they have to be, though these folks will fill out an affidavit, and it has to be approved by the Department of Insurance. But we're looking more for skill set in that. And so we kind of had our skill set with legal, finance, and human resources. And it's common to have a five-person, five trustees on the board. And so two of the bargaining groups wanted to have representation on that. And the third bargaining group had no real interest in having a representative. So that's where we had Bill Dodd from Fire and Brady Reed from Police. And I think that they're pretty good thinkers. We had a chance to talk with Bill Dodd, and he has a pretty good financial background. And I think that Brady Reed, I don't know him personally, but he's an administrator in the police department. And so we think that we have a pretty good five-person team.
Do we need a motion to approve those people?
I think that, yeah, we should. When we do this motion, we should approve the action.
I'll make a motion that we approve those five.
And then we would want to include approval of the actuarial study as well.
Yeah.
Second.
So a motion and a second to direct staff to move forward the actuarial study and approve the trustees as presented. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Renata.
McEvers?
Yes.
Kukin?
Aye.
English?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74206, subsection F, to communicate with legal counsel for the public agency to discuss the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigations or controversies not yet being litigated but imminently likely to be litigated. And subsection I to engage in communications with a representative of the public agency's risk management or insurance provider to discuss the adjustment of a pending claim or prevention of a claim imminently, word again, likely to be filed. Scary.
Motion, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kukin?
Yeah.
English?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Ettinger?
Yep.
Miller?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We're in executive session.